Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 10th, 2020 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I would ask that everyone please silence any electronic devices that make noise. If during the meeting an emergency should arise, please exit in an orderly manner. Make a right-hand turn and go down those stairs. If that exit for some reason is blocked, please make a left-hand turn, then a right-hand turn, and go down the end of the hall, down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask us, and we'd be happy to provide it to you. And again, do not use the elevator. At this time, I'll call on Reverend John Wright of Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Salisbury for our invocation. Good evening, Reverend Wright.
Good evening, and I want to express my gratitude for you inviting me back again this evening. It is always such an honor and a pleasure to be with you folks. And congratulations to the newest council members. I haven't had a chance to specifically say that, so, welcome. I invite you now to please join me in a moment of prayer. Great Spirit, loving Mother, Father, God, Allah, Yahweh, first cause, spirit of life and love, from our depths we call out to you to open our eyes, that we may see the needs of others, to open our ears, that we may hear their cries, to open our hearts, that we may give shelter to the homeless, bread to the hungry, and safety to the oppressed. May we as a community be guided to recognize the sacred flame that burns in each soul, and to honor our diversity and differences as a people, even as we more deeply honor that which binds us together in fundamental unity. May these our communities' leaders inspire us with their vision and purpose, as we in turn inspire them to bring our beloved city to new levels of excellence. May these faithful servants gain a clear understanding of our city's needs, and the will, compassion, and power to do what is right, just, and fair. With humble gratitude, let us acknowledge all those employed by our city who spend their working hours to make this city the shining light that it is and will be. May we as a community move with a clear, directed purpose to take our place among the best of communities, and help build a better time, a better place for all our citizens. And finally, may we as a nation recognize the inherent worth and dignity of every person, and rededicate ourselves to truly living as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We ask these things in the name of all the names by which humans have called upon you at all times and in all places. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Wright, I appreciate it. Please rise now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have a special presentation, so if Mrs. Todd and Ghost will come in.
(laughter)
Oh, my gosh. He's very fond of people.
Ms. Glantz, are you going to handle the honors?
One moment.
One moment.
She's got to get the scratches in, man.
Oh, my.
So, I'd like to invite April and Ghost up, along with Chief Duncan and any other family members that want to join us. Last week, we had a little episode happen at our city zoo. Our heron statue that resided in the herb garden went missing. And to say the least, our zoo staff and community, especially that help with the herb garden, and folks that visit our zoo frequently, were quite upset about this. And there was a community call from our media to let people know, to be on the lookout. And this past weekend, I think during a walk in the park, our hero Ghost here sniffed it out and realized something was amiss, and found the heron statue. So, it's a good thing that Ghost came back from beyond the wall, if anybody gets my reference, to save the heron. But we have a couple thank-yous for Ghost. Chief, do you want to go first?
Sure, absolutely. Well, this first award goes to Ghost, and I understand his full name is Ghost Winter Todd. So, Ghost, for your hard work this past weekend, it's my pleasure to award you this Exceptional Duty Medal, and I'll give it to, you know what, I'll give it to Anson and Aiden to hold on to. How about, how about?
Thank you.
Okay. So, what this is, our Exceptional Duty Medal can be awarded for a highly credible accomplishment, bringing public acclaim to the nominee, or the public in general, as a result of training, devotion to duty, or service to the public. So, Ghost.
Thank you.
Ghost Winter Todd.
If that dog reads, we're in real trouble.
(laughter)
Aww.
You don't even look, you don't need to.
Fantastic.
Aww.
He's a lover. See? Good job. He's a very curious dog, as you can see. That's why I found it in the first place. He takes the same route every day, and he's right over.
That's awesome.
That is so cool.
And so, April, we have an award for you as well. So, this-
I just dialed the phone number.
You know what, somebody had to do it, right? He's such a good boy, oh, goodness. So, our civilian award, which we are honoring you with here today, is awarded when an individual renders valuable assistance to a member of the police department, or the police department itself, which in turn benefits the police department and the citizens of Salisbury. So, April, and gentlemen, you should be very proud of your mom, she's awesome for the work that she did this past weekend. We thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yes, we are too.
He's got more stuff coming, too.
I know.
Oh, my goodness.
You better have a treat in there.
And so, on behalf of the mayor's office and the city council, Ghost is receiving the Goodest Boy Award for his exceptional bird-dog skills that led him to the missing great heron statue being restored to its rightful place in the herb garden near the main entrance to the Salisbury Zoo. A special thank you to Ghost's assistant, owner April Todd, who alerted police that Ghost had found the missing statue. And we also have some delicious goodies for Ghost to enjoy.
Oh, yes.
That's very kind, thank you. He's a rescue dog.
Oh, fantastic.
Right here from Wycomico.
Fine.
And he does have a treat, that's cool.
Beautiful dog. As much as your eyes.
He's so pretty.
He was one of their feral ones that they were worried would not be adopted.
Oh, my God.
And he has turned out to be a wonderful one.
Well, it certainly does take a family to-
It's about six months, really. Yeah.
He's very good, though.
He's one of the things, one of the first dogs. But now, he's good to go, right?
He's like, yeah, just give me the cheese, though, that's all I need. Aww.
Well, thank you, and I'm just glad the statue's back, because we enjoy the park every day, and we were sad, too, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, that was very kind.
I'll record you for tomorrow.
Thank you, April.
Did Becky got your phone number?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, April, thank you, Ghost.
Yes.
Beautiful dog.
I'm assuming that you don't want Ghost to stay for any time.
He's welcome to stay.
He can stay, he can come sit right over here by me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was very kind, you're tricky.
At this time, I'm going to call on Amanda Pollack, Director of Infrastructure and Development, to introduce our guests.
This is a tough act to follow.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. So, we're really happy to be here tonight, and I'll be introducing the Coastal Association of Realtors. The city of Salisbury was the recipient of a $3,300 grant from the Coastal Association of Realtors and the National Association of Realtors, and this is for Phase 1 of our Edible Garden Project. So, this is on the Riverwalk, and it's the start of a larger initiative to have edible plants throughout the city. So, this will be three raised beds behind the Market Street Books area. We've had an advisory group for some months planning this. It's been chaired by Alyssa Hastings, our Sustainability Coordinator, and we had Martin Hutchinson helping us with advice, Ginny Rosenkranz, Doug Draper. So, we've had a nice, very knowledgeable team helping us through this project. I do want to note, we are coordinating this with our new pedestrian bridge project, and that's why only three of the four beds are going in, is we want to make sure there was no conflict when the bridge comes in. So, I want to introduce Sarah Raine with the Coastal Association of Realtors, and she's going to talk a little bit more about this grant.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening. Welcome, Reverend. Thank you so much for having us. I'm actually going to invite our Board President, Joe Wilson, to come up and talk more about it, and our Executive Vice President, Paige Browning.
Evening, Joe.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for having us, we really appreciate it, we're really excited about this project. All the placemaking grants have been really successful so far. So, just quickly, we're here this evening to tell you about an exciting project that's been in the works for a few years, and invite you to get your hands a little dirty. First, we'd like to give you a little bit of information about the Coastal Association of Realtors, just in case anyone does not know who we are. We are a local Realtor association with over 1,000 members in Worcester, Wycomico, and Somerset Counties. Our purpose is to provide advocacy and services that enhance the professionalism and success of our Realtor and affiliate members, and we are a local chapter of the National Association of Realtors. As a local chapter of the National Association of Realtors, we are eligible for a number of grants that help us reach our community outreach goals. One of those grants is the placemaking grant, which provides financial assistance to help Realtor associations and their members to become engaged in placemaking in their communities. Placemaking is a way to make your community a better place to live by transforming unused and underused sites and ISOs into welcoming destinations accessible to everyone in a community. Over the past five years, we've received $12,400 from this program, which we've invested in four local placemaking projects. Our first project was a community chalkboard that sits outside the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center in Berlin, and prompts residents and visitors to leave nice messages for their neighbors. We partnered with the town's Economic Development Director to complete this project. Our next project, which was a lot of fun, was a pocket park on Smith Island. We partnered with Somerset County and the island residents to create a space for both residents and tourists to sit outside, eat lunch, hold meetings, and more. A group of us got on a boat and spent the day on the island, planting shrubs, building signage, moving furniture, learning about the island's heritage, and of course, eating crab cakes and Smith Island cake. If anyone has not been to Smith Island, by the way, highly recommend it. I've lived on the eastern shore my whole entire life, and it took me until we did this project in 2017 to go down there, and I really, really enjoyed it, it was awesome, awesome place. Our third project was a community garden in Berlin at the new library there. For this project, we partnered with the library, the Worcester County Master Gardeners, Maryland Coastal Bays Program, and the Assatee Coastal Trust. At the old library, these groups maintained a garden that had provided over 5,000 pounds of fresh produce for Deaconia. They wanted to move that garden to the new library, and we were able to help them make that happen. With that being said, I'll let Paige Browning come up and finish up the presentation.
Thank you, Joe. Our fourth project is the Edible Park in downtown Salisbury. The city came to us with this idea a few years ago, when they learned about our grant. The Edible Park will provide food that may be picked and eaten by residents and visitors. It will also be a meeting area and an educational opportunity, thanks to the informational signage. Ideally, this park will serve as an anchor for continued planting of edible foliage all along the Riverwalk path. The park will be located, as we mentioned earlier, on a vacant lot behind Market Street Books. The lot is owned by the city and faces the Wycomico River, and you can see the area there. The park will feature garden beds, a number of edible plants, some seating, and educational signage, and it will be constructed by car members, city employees, and community volunteers, and will be maintained by community volunteers and the city. And we would love to invite you, the mayor's office and the city council, to join us for the Build and Planting Day on Wednesday, March 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00. We'll be constructing the park and planting the beds, and please just let Sarah Raine know if you would be interested in coming, and be prepared for any type of weather and for getting dirty. So, thank you so much for allowing us to come and talk to you about this project, we're very excited about it.
Thank you, Paige. Questions from the council?
Yeah, thank you for-
Yeah, that's, thank you very much. You guys come through, and it's exciting, and I will be there.
Yes, definitely. Good, we look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Sarah, I'll be there. What time is it again?
2:00 to 4:00.
2:00 to 4:00.
Not AM.
At this time, I'll call for a motion to adopt a legislative agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Gregory. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is 4-0. I want to attain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Boda?
Second.
Ms. Blake.
Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good, and you all?
Very good.
Very good. The consent agenda this evening consists of the January 27th, 2020 Legislative Session Minutes, Resolution 2995, accepting a 2018 Toyota Tacoma, vehicle identification number 3, TM CZ5 AN1JM16130. The automobile has been forfeited by the Circuit Court of Wycomico County to be used for various operations by the Salisbury Police Department. Resolution number 2996, accepting a donation of a semi-trailer from Purdue Farms, Inc., for the Department of Field Operations. Resolution number 2997, to amend the gift policy by creating a minimum threshold to requiring council approval for acceptance of monetary and material donations valued at more than $5,000 from various individuals, organizations, and stakeholder groups. Resolution number 2998, declaring that Arvin Jane, DMD, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 614 Eastern Shore Drive, Salisbury, Maryland. Resolution number 2999, declaring that Safety Resources, LLC, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 1938 Windsor Drive, Salisbury, Maryland. That concludes the consent agenda.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is 4-0. I want to attain a motion to approve Resolution 3000. Mr. Boda?
Second.
Ms. Blake.
Good evening, Ms. Glantz.
Good evening. It's not the same without a dog up here.
No.
Resolution number 3000, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing the capacity fee of the city's comprehensive connection charge to be waived for the redevelopment of 123 Bateman Street. Whereas Bateman Street Partnership, LLC, Mr. Bob Cambarne has requested the waiver of capacity fee for the redevelopment of 123 Bateman Street. And whereas the proposed redevelopment is located inside the city limits and the enterprise zone, and the city seeks to encourage redevelopment in the enterprise zone, and the city seeks to reduce the capacity fees for eligible redevelopment in the enterprise zone by means of the equivalent dwelling unit, EDU incentive area. And whereas the proposed redevelopment of 123 Bateman Street requires a total of 3.9 EDUs of water and sewer service, the current capacity fee for the equivalent dwelling unit is $3,533, and whereas the capacity fee for 3.9 EDUs is $13,778.70. And whereas the city council approved a capacity fee waiver process under ordinance number 2258 for redevelopment in the enterprise zone, and whereas the Director of Infrastructure and Development reviewed the request and has determined that the project is eligible for the capacity fee waiver, and whereas the mayor reviewed the request and supports sending the request to the city council, and whereas, if approved, the EDU allocation for the capacity fee waiver is valid for two years from the time of signing of this resolution, and whereas the property owner has the option to request an extension of the allocation for two one-year terms, if approved in writing by the Director of Infrastructure and Development prior to the expiration of the term, and whereas the allocated EDUs are assigned to the redevelopment of 123 Bateman Street and cannot be transferred by the recipient.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 3000, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The vote is 4-0. I want to attain a motion to approve Resolution 3001.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Gregory?
Resolution number 3001, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, in support of the submission of legislation to the Maryland General Assembly to create a local alcohol license commission for the city of Salisbury. Whereas the state of Maryland controls the alcohol boards, and whereas Wycomico County is designated by state law to control the alcohol license commission and the liquor control board for the areas and municipalities in Wycomico County. And whereas there are many restaurants, community events, and facilities located in the city of Salisbury that require alcohol licenses, and the city of Salisbury will be able to better serve the citizens of the city by having control of the alcohol license issued within the city. And whereas the city of Salisbury desires to have its own license commission to issue and monitor alcohol license within the city limits, and whereas Wycomico County would continue to issue and monitor alcohol license within Wycomico County for facilities and functions outside of the limits of the city of Salisbury, and whereas Wycomico County would continue to have the only liquor control board for the areas of Wycomico County. And whereas the state of Maryland must pass a law to create a local alcohol license commission for the city of Salisbury, and House Delegate Carl Anderson Jr. has offered to sponsor the bill and introduce the bill to the General Assembly.
Any questions or comments?
This is, we've been working on this for a few years, and I think this is going to really make an impact and give us a little bit more control and determine our own destiny.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution number 3001, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The vote is 4-0. I want to attain a motion to approve Resolution number 3002.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Blake?
Resolution number 3002, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, in support of the submission of legislation to the Maryland General Assembly to require a tax set-off for municipalities in Wycomico County, whereas the state of Maryland requires some counties to provide a tax set-off to municipalities for services provided by municipality, and allows for counties to have the choice of whether or not they will provide a tax set-off to municipalities. And whereas the city of Salisbury provides many services for the citizens of the city that replace what the county provides outside the city limits. And whereas the citizens of the city of Salisbury currently pay the full amount of real estate taxes to both the county and the city, but only receive some services from the county. And whereas the city of Salisbury desires for its citizens to receive a tax set-off for their county real estate taxes for the services not provided them by the county and received from the city. And whereas state law currently states that Wycomico County may provide a tax set-off, and whereas the city of Salisbury has repeatedly requested a tax set-off from the county, but the county has not agreed to provide a tax set-off, and whereas the state of Maryland must pass a law to require Wycomico County to provide a tax set-off, and House Delegate Carl Anderson Jr. has offered to sponsor the bill and introduce the bill into the General Assembly.
Questions or comments?
Again, this has been decades, what should have been done.
Long overdue.
And I think it's ultimately going to, like it says, it's a Tax Fairness Act, and it's only fair that, you know, we only pay the taxes that we receive services for.
I concur. Certainly, it has been decades, many decades, and no one wants to be charged twice for the same thing. And we've been experiencing that for years. So, this is a major move forward for our city, and look forward to the passage of the bill. Anything else? Hearing nothing, I will call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 3002, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening.
I want to attain a motion to approve ordinance number 2577 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Blake?
Second.
Sorry, got to speak up, I can't hear you. Thank you. Ms. Gregory, seconds. Mr. Tillman?
Thank you. This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY20 General Fund Budget to appropriate the funds received from the Heron Agility Group for the purchase of K-9 bulletproof vests, whereas Mrs. Dennis Jest of the Heron Agility Group wishes to donate $1,500 to the Salisbury Police Department to be used to purchase K-9 bulletproof vests, and whereas funds received from the Heron Agility Group in the amount of $1,500 will directly benefit the Salisbury Police Department K-9 program by purchasing K-9 bulletproof vests, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department requests that these funds be placed in the SPV K-9 Animal Supplies Account, which will be used to purchase police K-9 bulletproof vests, and whereas the appropriations must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits to the council and city of Salisbury. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that city's fiscal year 2020 General Fund Budget be, and is hereby amended as follows. Increase the General Fund Revenue Account by $1,500, and increase the police department budget by an equivalent amount.
Questions or comments?
None.
The only comment I have is, I want to thank Mrs. Jest and the Heron Agility Group for their fantastic donation on behalf of the council. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2577 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is 4-0. I want to attain a motion to approve ordinance 2578 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda? Ms. Gregory? Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend Chapter 12.20 Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Natural Resources Program, Sections 010A, 010B, 010C, 020A, 110A, 110B, 120B, 102B, .50, 120B, .92, 140A, 2D, 190B, 260C, 270B, 280A1, and 290D, 300A, 310A, 3.2, 3.50, .C, .5, and 4.10B, and .530E of the Salisbury Municipal Code by deleting the references to the Department of Planning and Zoning Community Development and replacing with the Department of Infrastructure and Development, correcting references to COMAR, and by adding, let's see, this is Article 14, Section .540, to add a section for fees and costs, and an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for the FY2020 to establish fees for the critical area program. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury reorganized the departmental structure of the city in 2017, and whereas the section in the municipal code dealing with the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Natural Resources Program cannot be altered without the prior approval of the state, and whereas the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development was eliminated as part of the reorganization structure of the city of Salisbury, and whereas the responsibilities of this department for the planning and zoning are- handled by the newly created Department of Infrastructure and Development, and whereas the state of Maryland has reorganized the Code of Maryland Regulations known as COMAR, thereby making references to COMAR incorrect, and whereas the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury desire to correct the COMAR references within the city code, and whereas the Wycomico County currently administers the Critical Areas Natural Program for Wycomico and the city of Salisbury, and whereas the city of Salisbury desires that the Department of Infrastructure and Development administer the Critical Areas Natural Resources Program for areas located within the city, and whereas ordinance number 2541 set fees for the 2020, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to amend the 2020 fee schedule to establish fees for the Critical Area Program so that they may be collected in FY2020, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends the FY2020 fee schedule be amended by adding the attached fee schedule. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Salisbury that Chapter 12.20 of the Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows, and do you want me to go through each of the sections, or?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
All right. And then if you flip to the back is where the fee schedules are identified.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance number 2578 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is four zero. I want to attain a motion to approve Ordinance 2579 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Blake?
Ms. Gregory?
Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement and accept a grant of $100,000 from the Maryland Department of Transportation, Maryland Bike Ways Program for the design and construction of the West Side Bike Network and approving an amendment of the FY20 Budget to allocate said funds for the purposes of implementation. Whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation has a Maryland Bike Ways Program for providing grant funds to support and expedite projects improving bicycle and pedestrian transportation in the state, and whereas the Maryland Department of Transportation and the city of Salisbury have been working together to improve bicycle collectively throughout the city of Salisbury, and whereas the city of Salisbury desires to implement a bike route along Isabella Street and Lake Street as part of a wider West Side Bike Network with the intent of connecting cyclists on the west side to the larger network. And whereas the project will enhance bicycle safety and access to the population of the city residing west of the Wycomico River, and whereas the Maryland Bike Ways Program has awarded a grant in the amount of $100,000 to provide for the design and implementation of the West Side Bike Network Phase 1, and whereas the city shall accept the grant in the form of reimbursements and transfer those funds from the MDOT reimbursement account to the Bike Ways Capital Projects Account, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland does hereby authorize the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement accepting the project term and definition of matching funds for the benefit of the city and its residents, and accepts the grant of $100,000 for Maryland Bike Ways Program to design and implement funding for the West Side Bikes Network Phase 1, and further authorizes grant reimbursements to be transferred to the appropriate Bike Ways Capital Projects Account. Be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows with an increase in the Bike Ways Program Grant Revenue Account of $100,000 and an increase in the Maryland Bike Ways Program Grant Expense Account of an equivalent amount.
Any questions or comments? I think it's commendable that our grant writers do such an excellent job. This isn't one of the only ones that we receive, but a grant of this magnitude certainly allows us to expand outside of the city central, and I think it's a great, great move. So, congratulations. No other comments? I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance number 2579 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Vote is four zero. I want to attain a motion to approve Ordinance number 2580 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake?
Mr. Boda?
Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend the fee schedule for FY2020, whereas ordinance number 2541 set fees for FY2020, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to establish fees for small wireless facilities constructed under License to Encumber Agreement for private utilities and public easements and rights of way, and whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends the attached fee schedule will be added to ordinance number 2541 so that they may be collected in FY2020. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury that the fee amounts included in the attached Exhibit 1 amended FY2020 fee schedule shall be adopted by the city of Salisbury, and the amount set forth therein shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the Salisbury Municipal Code until one or more of the said fees are subsequently amended, and be it further enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the ordinance shall take effect upon passage.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance number 2580 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Vote is four zero. I want to attain a motion to approve Ordinance number 2581 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda?
Ms. Blake?
Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury requiring a permit for the placement of facilities or utilities in the city rights of way and adopting specific regulations applicable to the above-ground facilities, including communications facilities, small cell facilities, and wireless support structures in the rights of way. Whereas the city desires to establish general procedures and standards consistent with all applicable federal, state, and local laws for the issuance of permits in the city rights of way, and to establish additional criteria applicable to above-ground facilities, including communications facilities, small cell facilities, and wireless support structures in the city's rights of way, and to ensure that all above-ground facilities are carefully designed, constructed, modified, maintained, and removed when no longer in conformance with all applicable health and safety regulations, and whereas the city seeks to enhance the ability of utility providers to install facilities in the city quickly, effectively, and efficiently so that residents, businesses, and visitors benefit from the service availability while still preserving the character of the city's neighborhoods and corridors, and whereas the reasonably regulated and orderly deployment of facilities in the public rights of way is desirable, but unregulated or disorderly deployment represents a threat to the health, welfare, safety, environment, and property values of the community. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of Salisbury, Maryland that the general requirements in the License to Encumber Agreement, which is incorporated herein, made a part hereof by reference, are hereby adopted, and that Director of Infrastructure and Development is authorized to adopt such other rules and regulations as shall be consistent with the Code, the License to Encumber, and other applicable state and federal law.
Any questions or comments?
This is something we've been working on for the past couple of years, and I think this has been a really help in a lot of ways throughout our city with connection.
Agreed. If there are no other comments, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance number 2581 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Vote is four zero. I want to attain a motion to approve Ordinance number 2582 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake?
Ms. Gregory?
I was getting worried there.
So was I.
Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the Maryland Department of Planning for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $19,810 and approving a budget amendment to appropriate the grant funds for the city of Salisbury 2020 census outreach activities. Whereas the Maryland Department of Planning received a general fund appropriation in FY2020 state budget for funds to establish the 2020 census grant program, and whereas the purpose of the 2020 census grant program is to provide grants to Maryland local governments and nonprofit organizations to support community outreach activities prior to and during the 2020 census, and whereas the accurate counting of the population of the state and its local jurisdictions and the collection of basic demographic and housing information has a direct impact on the distribution of federal resources, and whereas an accurate and equitable distribution of federal resources is critical to the future of the state of Maryland and the city of Salisbury, and whereas the MDP has awarded a 2020 census grant to the city of Salisbury, which provides funding in the amount of $19,810 for the 2020 census outreach activities, and whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with MDP defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter forbids contracts requiring an expenditure in excess of amounts appropriated for that general classification or expenditure, and forbids any office department or agency from expending funds not appropriated, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purposes of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, that the mayor Jacob R. Day is authorized to enter into an agreement with the state of planning to accept grant funds in the amount of $19,810, and be it further ordained that the city's grant fund budget be amended as follows. Increase in the 2020 census grant revenue account by $19,810 and increase in the 2020 census grant expense account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? I just have one comment. I think this grant is fantastic, and I think it's based on the work of our Census Committee headed by Ms. Glanz and a lot of other people. And I'd like to remind everybody that to please, please, complete your census reports because our funding is based on the number of people that we record. So please, do not forget to register for the census. Having said that, Mr. Boda, you have a comment?
And you'll be able to do it online this year, too.
Yeah, you'll be able to do it online. So, it's not difficult to do, and it's extremely, extremely important. All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Ordinance number 2582 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Vote is four zero. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Carter, do we have any requests for...
No, we do not.
No comments? Thank you. Anything for the good of the order?
Just give blood. Just give blood. Blood donations. I'm always... Just please, we're very short.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it. All right, if there's no other business, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.